Call to order the December 20, 2023 regular city council meeting. Uh, City Administrator, would you do roll call please?
For the record, the time is 6:00 PM. Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Council President Susan Snow.
Here.
Councillor Richard Wilson.
Here.
Councillor Chris Clemmons.
Here.
Councillor Tom Mellon.
Here.
Councillor Melissa Stinson.
Present.
And Councillor Joe Giaman.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. You join me?
All right, let's begin.
All right. Uh, consideration of the agenda, does anybody have any necessary revisions or changes? Seeing none, any motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
On the consent agenda, I would point out that apparently I didn't do the November 15 minutes. But you do have the December 6th. So we would need to amend the consent agenda to remove the minutes of November 15.
So noted, any discussion on the attached meeting minutes before leaving also on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all entertain the voting?
Aye.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have the big announcement, we'll be closed starting noon, December 21st, for Christmas and New Year's reopening Monday, January 2nd. At 10:00 AM, correct, normal hour, normal?
Normal.
Okay. Thank you, item seven is citizen input, uh, new item not being discussed at the public hearing, we don't have any public hearings tonight, so any item in the vote we'd like to discuss? Thank you. Uh, Bob Shipley, you're first assigned in, you'd like to discuss anything? Okay. Emma Clemmons, thank you. And I'm William McGuire. Thanks. And Ms. Jackson.
I would just like to wish you all my happy holiday, and I look forward to working with you all in the new year, and um, I'm, I'm, the one thing I am concerned about coming up in the new year is um, the passage of ordinance 259, or chapter 155, and I hope that will be broken up and done more piecemeal than it's been done in the past, but I wish you all a happy holiday, and we can deal with those issues later, if you have a good holiday with your families.
Thank you. All right, and your whole business, collections update, nothing to report, goals for the city?
In your pocket. I did my best to take all that discussion and boil it down into some goals, and perhaps it is not good enough, but.
Do you have a page number on that?
Page three.
No, it's after all the financial stuff.
No, it's, it's back here.
Oh, gold, gold, I got you, that's in the minutes, that's the decision.
We don't.
You're right.
It's the clear cut one, it's, it's just before the uh, calendar and the back. It's quite a ways back.
One more. All right. All right, so this is an open discussion item for the council?
Yeah, goals regarding good governance, I suggest we put those in our priority list, starting with the uh, charter and the comprehensive plan, and then all the ordinance that's following up.
Everybody okay with that?
Not very good.
Thank you.
Do we have a set time of how fast or where we want to start with each of these goals? Which means do we want to focus, or focusing all one, at one time?
Thank you.
That's quite a good goal, and I understand they are all needing timely manner of being taken care of, but that is six goals.
Under uh, good governance, uh, that goal, I think the discussion of that would uh, put everything else in line, is my thought, I guess.
To take care of good governance first, and then address the rest of the goals?
And then it'll address each one through the council members, what they feel are the, the next two, three, four, five goals.
Does anybody feel like anything else should be done before the good governance? Would be my thought, I want to make sure everybody, and here have we asked that?
Any other comment?
If I may.
Please.
I like to take advantage of every opportunity to have somebody else pay for stuff, so there may be a goal on here that money comes up to pay for, in which case, I mean, I, I'd hate to see us strictly, we gotta follow this, I, I think the idea would be to get them as, done as expeditiously as possible, but properly.
And you have funding to take advantage of?
Yeah. Well, not only funding, but opportunity, and certain times of the year are better for some things for the office than others are.
Could there be an opportune time to involve the public in volunteering to handle things such as, you know, roads and streets and?
Potentially.
I think that would be a good community involvement for those who are seeking to participate.
I would.
And would definitely help out everybody in our community and save money.
Well, that being said, um, you know, we have discussed at some points having a second meeting, and Susan had mentioned that uh, maybe we should have just a, like a planning meeting, and then a regular council meeting to help us get things jump-started, get going with things, so that way it's not a set meeting, but a planning meeting, where the council, or the, where the public can come in and actually, you know, participate in uh, the council's planning, and hear what they have to say, but if we don't need that meeting, it's not set in stone, and we don't have to have it, so maybe that's something that we should start, council's decision and discussion.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, me too, how are we gonna know we need it though?
I think it should be planned, and you know, the work study being, I don't know, optional, but I think it needs to be at least.
Is not on the depth, or who's coming, or?
It would, it would be for the council more than anything, because we, we can't, we can't sit here and continue beating our heads against the wall for one hour a month. So, we gotta get ahead of the game, is my thoughts, and by doing so, if we start in by having a study session, that gives uh, the public the opportunity to come in and talk, because our council meetings are for dealing business, so that doesn't necessarily give them the opportunity to speak, this would give them the opportunity to?
Yeah, I'm all for that, I just was wondering how do we know if you show up to this meeting, if nobody's going to show up?
Well, if, if we plan a meeting a month in advance, then everybody knows.
We have to host a meeting if people don't show up?
Yeah.
Don't talk about public.
But if we send them all at once, then people will know on this, you know, just as we have our city council meetings, on this day of the month is the work study, or you know, planning meetings, whatever we like to call them.
We're calling work sessions.
I thought.
We should call it work sessions, because?
Yeah, we just have decisions, and we just talk.
So, our current normal meetings, third Wednesday of the month, wanna have a first and third Wednesday of the month, first being?
We can give it a try until I get so far behind on minutes that?
Do we have a topic for the first one?
Topic, the very first one would be the good governance.
Yeah, we should go in order, right?
Go with the prayer, and then we set the rest from there.
And it's just, there's, it's, a work session is, we just talk about things, we don't make any?
Right, there's no vote item.
No votes, no anything, but that's done the third, the regular council meeting.
But it gives us the opportunity to say, hey, this is what we want to see, and then when we get to council meeting, we can make the decision, an informed decision.
Absolutely, it gives us more time to discuss it.
What time is today?
I do it at the same time.
Same?
Six o'clock?
Uh, yeah, I would answer that.
I guess, how do we effectively get people to show up?
Well, that was kind of what I was thinking about.
You know, with many forms, like, do we put stuff in, like, the science on news or paper, saying there's gonna be this, these meetings, it's gonna be great if a lot of people showed up, or someone could get opinions of a few, and run with that.
I think a lot, I do like how you there have been putting things out on, you know, the, the media group that people, the social media, uh, because I think there's a good variety of people that do social media, and then we have our other folks in our town that, you know, benefit from maybe the newspaper, our posting board out here.
Coast radio.
Um, coast radio, our website, you know?
Different forums, okay.
We need to hit on every single level.
That's expensive, and we don't have, we haven't budgeted for that, but I will try and put it.
Look at what we can, you know?
What's the, the standard minimum for all public meetings, it's like, the recorded office and two public location room?
So one's out here in our board.
Yeah, one's on the board here, and one's at the post office.
Post office, so there's two, and we only need one other one, which is?
And you don't have to have three if you only have two.
There we go, well, we've covered all ready then.
But it's putting it in the paper, that'd be fine, cause you know, I can just figure something out and work with them and see, they're usually about 300, it depends on how much I put in there.
Well, that's if we do a legal notice versus if we get in.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I understand.
Somebody needs to do something, I'm afraid.
You have more control if you're right.
I'll let you have the title. Don't look at me.
The, the one thing I think we need to maintain though is the three-minute deal, allowing people to speak, and, and maybe that's why the three minutes, I, I, that would be up to council's decision, but we need to set a timeframe for people to, to be able to talk, but if we're not getting over and everybody gets the opportunity to speak, so.
And before we get too far off topic, I have to point out that amendments to the charter and to the comprehensive plan, there's a process set up, but lot by lot, to do those, you can't talk about them first, or you talk about them first, and only to send it to the planning commission, and have them form the CAC and go from there, so.
All right, any other comments on that? So is this an action item, you want us to approve the goals as?
As amended, if you're gonna amend them, I mean, there's already been one amended.
Okay.
The other's all, only not one goal.
Right, okay.
So no need to prioritize those.
All right, then uh?
Unless I've missed something, and I don't know if I have missed something that someone?
This is a good place to start.
Yeah.
That needs to be added to it, so, okay.
All right.
Do we need a motion for this uh, executive session on the first morning of the month?
It's not executive session, it's a work session.
Yeah, I don't think so, when we get to the end, we set dates, we can talk about that, so for this, uh, we need motion to approve as amended?
So you? Some good, 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 brings more to light.
I'll say Melissa.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, any opposed? All right, seeing none, we'll go to item C, the zip code discussion, so we brought this up, we tabled it, um, Rich, I believe you were ill, and we had two empty seats, so at this point, we've got a full council, so we can have a brief discussion, and you guys decide where you want to go from here, I hand it out, and I brought the same thing, so it's been in the meeting minutes, but there's a little publication on zip codes that the post office, the postal primer, um, requesting a change, yes?
Thank you, sir.
And this is on the internet, we can post the link if we need to, but it was also in the meeting minutes, it's the same thing we had, um, with the zip code. And then they have a more in-depth, and I didn't make copies for everybody, it's 11 pages long, but the um, there's a report for Congress on zip codes, and I want to read one little piece of this, and it says, "Ever since the zip code system was devised in the 1960s, some citizens that wanted to change zip codes in which their address is assigned, because zip code is often not aligned with the municipal boundary, millions of Americans have mailing addresses in neighboring jurisdictions, this can cause higher insurance rates, confusion in voter registration, misdirected property and sales tax revenue for municipalities, and uh, property value effects, depending on the community, some communities that lack a delivery post office complain the need to use the mailing address of an adjacent city of opposite of a community identity," so we've had some of these issues specifically here in taxes and identity and routing mail, and some people use Florence, some people use Dune City, um, and some Westlake, and the post office has to sort through all that, so um, so the question is, um, do we want to follow this guideline, we can petition the post office, um, for our own zip code, it's their business decision, they do some public outreach, um, if they decide it's worth pursuing, so we just have to ask, and at some point, whether we ask or not, they may change anyway, you know, based on the business, based on the size of the area, and the number of residents, and the number of mail stops, and that sort of thing, so we tabled it, we had a bit of a discussion, and uh, but we've now got everyone here, so we decided to bring it back and talk about it, and um, if you direct me, I will petition the post office, and if you vote negative, then we'll move along, so.
Susan had some information, she had talked about one time, and it was, basically, we uh, go eliminate Dune City and just go with Westlake, and that was the, that's the, to my understanding, it was the simplest form to be able to accomplish that, is, is that the case, or?
Well, that's what we've got to ask the post office, if that makes sense to them, then yeah, maybe that's.
You can ask them to use that one, and then they will determine if that's what they want to do, but it's again, it's just a letter of asking, but to me, as I read through it, and the information I got is out of that 11-page document they have, and it talks about, um, do the taxes and everything, you can ask to use a zip code that's already in existence, if that is the betterment for the community, so.
So, I guess, the question I have is, how does that work when we, if we decide to do that, how do we eliminate Dune City, is it, is it just a charter type?
No, you don't eliminate Dune City, I think Dune City and Westlake would have the same zip code, instead of Dune City having the Florence zip code, and Westlake having a different zip code, if, that's probably the simple, I mean, that's their call, that's probably the simple version.
I think you're just asking the, the postmaster for the simple thing, what are our options?
Right, and they'll come back and say?
And they can come back, say, no, everything's going this way, or, you know, this way, or there's this way.
Right.
We don't know, it's undetermined.
Cause there's portions of Westlake that are unincorporated in Lake County, they're not part of Dune City, so that's for them to figure out, you know, they still would have mailed all those addresses, so um, so the, the request is simple, and then they do their magic, they would come back to us and say, we deny it, or we would approve it, here's what we recommend, and then they would do the outreach to the residents affected, I think, if, if everyone get a postcard, I think, um, if you want to follow up.
I think we should, I mean, if it's gonna potentially generate funds for the city.
Certainly would help, because?
Taxes?
Yeah, the, the State Division of Taxation said the same thing we found, they said, restart with zip codes, cause that's easy, and?
I'm all for it, that's.
This came up last month with leading cities, and Newport has the opposite, or is similar to Florence, Newport said, oh yeah, we're a winner in that map, because there's areas outside of Newport, and you know, they default to the city, and then they have to worry about splitting up taxes, and we've seen the same, where ours was delivered to Florence, and?
They don't see any about it.
For years, yeah.
I think it's a go, I, you know, and then we can, as long as it's coming back to us to be tabled, to just further discuss what the outcomes, or not the outcomes, excuse me, the probabilities are of what we can do, I think we need to.
Okay, okay, is that a motion, or?
I make the motion to reach out, absolutely.
Paul Silver?
Thank you, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll, we'll work on a letter to the post office, see where it takes us. Item D, garbage collection, franchise to be updated?
Paid.
Today, all up to date, correct?
Everything's paid down, if anything else that we, I mean, they don't, the new owner doesn't have to pay the back fees from the?
For the stuff they purchased.
So we aren't gonna get into that, but from here on out, um, they will continue to pay.
Very good, thank you. Franchise, nothing to report?
No, nothing back from China yet.
All right, I think that takes us to reports. I don't have anything new, other than I want to wish everybody happy holidays, and uh?
Did you want to report on your meetings?
Oh, yeah, um, sorry, I do have something to report, a week ago, we got an email here at City Hall, uh, the governor has been on her, listening to her, and her goal was to get to every county in the state, um, but she's actually had multiple stops in each county, so she was in Lake County last Monday, I got, I got an invite to have breakfast with the governor on Thursday, so uh, it was in Veneta, so I drove to Veneta Thursday, it was Junction City, Veneta, and Dune City mayors, and our county commissioner, and uh, so a very small group, we had great discussions, ran about an hour and a half, um, the state bought breakfast. It was a, it was a big win, um, we got some good pictures, and uh, and I brought up our water sampling plan specifically, I said, this is very unique to our situation right now, and um, they have staff member there that the state notes, I said, this isn't one of those generic, you know, send tax dollars, this is pretty specific, we're waiting for comments on the sampling plan, and the governor was very interested to hear how, that the, the citizens have been testing lake water on behalf of the state for years and years and years, and um, so I'm optimistic, we'll get something shaven loose, and I'll follow up with staff, you know, after New Years, and um?
Excellent.
And, you know, and we, we do have a lot of residents that are obviously very interested, some would like to go back to doing whatever the plan said while we wait, and I said, I don't have an issue with that, because they just really, they didn't deny anything.
But the state won't allow that plan anymore, because they changed their dynamics, they wanted to, the plan to follow their new format.
What if, what if these, these water districts, our little community systems, what if they just sample their water, and report it to the, to the neighbors and whoever's interested?
They can do that, that's on their own, this, this is the state reporting.
Right, right, so we wouldn't be sending anything back to the state until we get there.
Anybody can sample their own water, that's not a, a problem, we don't do it for the residents, we do it for the state, that's what it was.
Same residents are interested, continuing to report, you know, it's been three plus years now, right?
It's, yeah, we stopped during COVID, then Oregon State changed the plan, and they said until we have a new recognized plan, they want us to, to wait, so that's what we've been doing.
All right, so I'll follow up, we'll see what the staff says, and uh, yeah, thanks, Jamie, um, he's very positive, so, let's go, let's see, next is uh, community center report.
Um, our kind of on-staff, but not on-staff handyman, has been working on uh, stove, getting everything ready for the stove to be installed, so we might get that ISO put where it needs to be before two months later. Um, I did want to say earlier, the auditor con- conversation, I wanted to let everybody know, um, everybody know, that um, my, the auditor called me yesterday, the head auditor called yesterday and said, well, you guys do things on an accrual basis, don't you? And I said, no, we, we are a cash basis, we've always been a cash basis, and so uh, he said, oh, well, we've been doing it on accrual basis, that's why there's so many journal entries that are so large, is to try and make it fit in accrual process, and so they're gonna have to go back and change everything now, and put it the way it's supposed to be, which is money in, money out, I mean, that's all there is to it, it's pretty simple, I do it on a cash basis, and everybody can see what's going on.
Who is doing it on accrual, other than them, why are they doing that?
I think because most cities are on accrual, but we don't have taxes, we don't have taxes, and we don't have uh, the kind of income that most cities have, so they were treating us like the other cities when we aren't the other cities.
Who are they gonna pay for themselves, and we doing their stuff?
We had that conversation too. Oh, it was, it went well, he understands, I mean, because I sent, as you all know, cause you get, well, those of you who've been around, um, the budget committee, the budget message that I submit when we start considering a budget, starts out by explaining that we are operated on a cash basis, and the, and we have these policies and those policies, and the restricted funds, and all that stuff, it explains all that stuff, so uh, which tells me clearly, they never read it. Anyway, so I'm glad to hear that, because it will make auditing so much easier, and cheaper, and easier on office staff, because when I'm doing audit, that's all I have time to do, is, cause there are firing questions all day long, send me this, send me that, what about this, what about that, so.
Was our last audit then gone and full with?
Yeah, they always have been, except maybe the first year, cause I know I filled out the paperwork and said cash, cash pa- cash basis, anyway, I was pleased, and, and I actually emailed Rory to let him know, he wasn't losing his mind, he was absolutely right, they were wrong.
Thank you. All right, C, uh, sorry if I jumped ahead, water quality report, Mr. President?
Um, I is, I'll report on the, I know there's residents that will worry about the water, so I will do some reporting every month, but the health of the lakes is good, and that's what we report on, uh, the turbidity this time of year is higher than uh, than it is the rest of the time of year, but that's normal, because it's due to the rainwater, disturbs the rain, the, the water, and the dirt comes up from the bottom, so the turbidity is, is high, high, higher than it is during summer, but that's normal for this time of year, so everything is normal, the, the lakes look good, um, and uh, I, I think that, we don't have, I don't see any issues in the, the lakes that I've looked around.
Very good, thank you. Road reports, and you know, the three of us, at least three of us don't have?
Yes, I know, I need to split it up, and what I do, the first thing I do is I take them out and I plot your houses on it.
Yeah.
Cause I try to get you close to your neighborhood, and you know, maybe beyond, and then there's always one guy that lives over here that has to go over here, you know, but, but I'll try and make it pretty even and let you all know, also, be prepared, Ethics Commission, uh, your questionnaire will be coming soon, they have your, the two new councillors they had, and the mayor, they have your email address, so they will, what they'll do is they'll email you and tell, remind you that it's time for you to do your ethics filing, and you will probably, in a separate email, you should get something that tells you how long it, you know, a password, or you know, an initial, so that you can use that, and you can change it to your password later. So keep your eyes open, don't?
But that comes like March or April, doesn't it?
It's due?
It's soon, that's all I know.
But we usually get it in, in?
It's the same time budget, so.
But last year we got it late, to fill it out, so it's, it's a couple months away.
Right, it is a couple months away, but especially the new guys, they'll get other stuff ahead of time, and if they don't respond to it, they won't get the ethics letter, and they're, they're considered.
You won't be able to.
Yeah. Just be sure to respond to anything they send you. Yeah. Just be sure to respond to anything they send you.
All right, and before we move on from D, does anybody know any issues that need immediate attention?
I don't think so.
All right.
Well, are roads being for the remain, the counselors that have been here, either we distribute everywhere, or?
I don't think so. I think you're fine, you're probably gonna be fine. Susan, you're probably gonna be fine.
I'm in Westlake, so.
Yeah, and Tom, you're probably gonna be fine.
Yeah, we just the same.
It's cloud nine, and your road's there.
It's the same thing, just gets slightly worse, you know, every week, every month, but what can we do about it? Well, monetarily, what can we do?
What I have to do is get an idea, I get, I get a list, and I'll get an idea about what they will cost, and I can either apply for funds from the state, ODOT, to do those, that work, if it's under a hundred thousand, or a hundred thousand and under, and I can name as many roads as possible. There's no guarantee I'll get it, but at least apply for that. We do have funds that we can use to go out and do some repairs, but I think if you all report them, and then, Pam's not here tonight, but Pam and I would go out and look at them, and decide which one is the worst, or which few are the worst, and kind of prioritize them that way. I would really like to get that under control and get a schedule set, like we used to have as a city, of just doing it every, when it came up, it was a rotation, it was a computer program that we used, and when the guy who used it left the city, he took the computer and the program with him, so.
That's why I think an idea of a volunteer to help, not only help her write the grants, so she is very busy, but maybe someone that can take over and be median assistant to her in regards to that, that's volunteering to do it. I think that would be beneficial for her and the team within the office.
Right.
It's a way that we can... Who was that? It's all supporting you.
Do, do we know anything about Dire Way?
Dire Way is a private road, and they have their responsibility for it themselves, that's the problem. It is a, many of the roads in the Silkus Lake Hug Platte are private. If they were unimproved, the county conveyed them to us, because the unimproved roadways, well, all of the roadways, the county took, I'm gonna explain it the way they explained it to me. They repossessed or took back, foreclosed upon for failure to pay taxes, the land under the pavement, the land under the roads, meaning they're not responsible for them, they just have this land that had taxes. And they wanted us to take it, but we didn't want, the city council chose not to take all the roads in the Silkus Lake Hug Platte, because that's a lot of roads that we had never maintained, well, occasionally we did. But for the most part, we hadn't maintained, and we, but when we did maintain them, it's because we were getting timber money from the county. Lots of money, and we could do it, but we don't get that timber money anymore, and we just can't afford it. Dire Way has a problem, and I would be more than happy to work with the homeowners and help them write a grant or something, or write a grant on their behalf, and, and figure something out that way, but... Or they could get together and come to the city and say, you know what, we could really use a public improvement district, just to get this project done, and then we could do something about it. There'd have to be a vote on that, on them creating a, a public improvement district for them.
Is an LID or DID that they would end up paying for over a period of years?
Yeah, they would end up paying.
Strictly out of their property taxes.
Well, that, you know, that would be another option that they have, but right now, it is considered a private road, and it's their responsibility to take care of it, and it's a bad situation, because that road's, that road's gonna go.
Yeah, it's, it's not good, but, yeah. I think the county can put themselves liable to putting steel plate over it.
I'm glad they did it, because I didn't have one to put over. I didn't have anybody to go put a steel plate over it.
Well, I mean, it's a private road, it's not the city's responsibility.
No, and it's not the county's responsibility, but it was nice of them to do that, and I appreciate that.
Item E is permit report, and we need a list.
And that's in your pocket?
Close to the back, yeah, right, the head of the calendar.
Ahead of the calendars and the mail. There were five mechanical permits issued. For those who don't know, that's this time of year, and most of these mechanical permits are for installation of a heat pump, some kind of heater in their house, could also be a electric fireplace, too. That's what we get every year this time. And then the electricals, there were six electrical permits, that's the other thing that, that comes up every winter, because electricians work in the, in the winter, because most of their stuff is inside. And then three public works permit. One was an erosion control, because there was an issue with drainage on a roadway. One is a driveway, and one was grading, an excavation, for an area less than what is, requires erosion sediment control plan.
And five new business licenses?
Five business licenses, some may be new, some may be renewals, yeah.
Okay, any questions for discussion? If not, let's go around the table for the good of the order. Rich, would you like to say?
Yeah, you, did you wanna discuss the dam a little bit?
Yeah, please.
So what I know of the dam, the state contacted Jamie, Jamie told them that they should contact me for an individual that would know the operations of the dam, I did know the operations of the dam. The dam was not open, we were flooding at the time. There was one and a half, three quarters of a gate open, so there was two full gates closed. One gate did not have a motor on it. We did get all the gates open fully at the end, we swapped motors. There is no, appears to be no maintenance happening on the dam. There's a lot of rest issues going on, where the motors are mounted that, that need to be addressed. The motors look like they probably are due to be gone through. Of course, I don't know if the one that was there is still feasible to be remanufactured, or if it needs to be replaced. But it definitely needs some work, so it's something that, as a city, we should kind of pay attention to, because it truly affects the residents of the city.
Right.
In not only the flooding aspect of this time of year, but the low water levels, and the way that it affects the wells around Dune City or Westlake. So it's something that we should really start paying attention to and taking some notes on.
So, does the city have any rights to that dam? Jamie?
We are party to the way the water is distributed, and for that reason, we're involved in the litigation, so, you know, we can file a petition and ask for whatever it is we need to, we might need to ask for.
Right.
There, the, part of the problem was, and I didn't realize it, and Rich, we have talked about it, there had been a temporary permit granted to a environmental organization who requested that instead of keeping the lake at eight feet, that it be dropped to five feet for a period of five years. And that was granted. Somehow, we didn't get notified of that, and we should, because we are parties to the litigation. We didn't get notified, and so that was approved, and that's the way it was operating until I asked somebody, how come we didn't get notified of that? And so immediately, the permit was withdrawn, the request was withdrawn, and it was supposed to return to the eight-foot operations. It never did, as far as I know, it never did. That's why we don't have near the water that we used to have coming in, and that's why wells, part of the reason why wells were going dry and things like that. So we have the right to file a petition if you have something to offer on how it should be resolved.
Are we petitioning the water master's office?
No, you're petitioning the state engineer's office.
Okay. So I guess this is an action item, we need to...
Well, what, I mean, if you were gonna do it for me, at this point, what I would say is, ask the federal, I mean, ask the state water master to demand that the owner of the dam hire someone knowledgeable to operate the dam in accordance with the order.
Okay, we can do that, right? I mean, that's what you're supposed to be...
Yeah, and I guess we could start with a letter first, just to see if that works, but if we have to, we would file a petition, making that request.
All right, let's, let's do that, I'll help you with that.
Do we even know if the water master is back in the office yet?
She is not, she, there is someone else that is covering her place that is in the Rosenberg office now.
Just wanted to make sure, because last night I checked, Ms. Dewitt was out.
Well, they had assigned it to the Douglas County Water Master, and the things went horribly, horribly wrong after that. So they took it away and put it back to the staff, so yes, I'm working, Mary is, is the under, Susan's is the water master, and Mary is her assistant.
Okay.
So Mary is handling that, that's what I'm working with on this, but until we have some sort of standing that says, you know, we have, we have some word in this, which is what we need to do.
Okay.
Get that control.
Well, I'm, I'm just glad that they called, I mean, and that I could help, because had we continued the way that we were going, with that much of the dam being closed, there would have been a lot more flooding issues to have been caused, and nobody in, in the determination of the conversations that I had, was doing anything about it, up to and including the owner, so.
As a resident that lives on Silkus Lake, I thank you for being the hero in that, because that's what you were.
I'm not a hero, I'm just...
You dropped everything and went down there, and did what you knew how to do to help us, and you didn't have to do that, so. I know I for one appreciate you, I'm sure there's lots of others out there that do.
There were several docks that got ruined, and it would have been worse if you had been done so.
I'm just glad I came to it.
Appreciate it. Anything else, Mr. Olson?
Vanessa, I have nothing.
Okay. Chris?
I have nothing.
Susan?
So I wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, if you settle very not, be safe, be responsible, make sure you make it back into 2024. Please don't leave us on the ferry first.
All right, Joe?
I do that.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved for second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, sounds unanimous, thank you.
For the record, what time?
Six forty-four.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, probably.